what's good my name is this sugar Barbie and we're back in the house with another video and we are back with our beautiful girl Ms Kate or we are and it's another day and another dollar so you already know what it is um it is Thursday morning y'all I have not as I updated my game for the latest patch but I have not installed the new um expansion packet I did buy it I pre-ordered it way back when they opened it up for preorder but I did not install it because I'm hearing about everybody any issues with this game and y'all I'm not about that life okay I start freaking out the moment my games start showing any signs of failure okay I I dislike it I can't do it is not for me um so yeah we do not have the new pack in I'm so mad because I really did not wanna record another episode of Kayori until that pack came since we've already got to see the get to school thing while playing with Desiree I was like well kinda don't wanna be so repetitive and continue to do the same thing um and I believe we seen Kayori's for a few days um through there as a well so I'll play her school day y'all but if nothing happens in it I'm probably just gonna fast forward through it because yeah nothing be happening um now also I said I did the update however I still have whims I do not know why I still have whims but I do and I noticed that our girl wants to break up with Blake she wants to break up with Blake okay I don't know why well probably because of the whole situation with her mama um he getting smart with her whatever like we don't do that you don't come in nobody's house get smart with their mama that's just what we don't do um but yeah y'all so she wanna break up with Blake so we're going to put a pin in that because we're definitely gonna do that um she wants to chat with Mateo um so we are definitely gonna chat with Mateo um and she wants to eat food which she is currently doing um hopefully she hurries up because school is coming up in a second um hopefully it gives the option to go to school like it was doing for Desiree's file if not you already know we finna be doing and look at these two all lovey lovey um mister you gotta go to work um yeah you're gonna get out of my house is what you're gonna do alright y'all so apparently it's a not going to send us to school so no we don't wanna do that wait hold up I mean yes we wanna do that we wanna skip um I guess she's choosing this outfit y'all she just looks so cute and everything she puts on do not mind her not having any shoes on I have a mod in my game that makes some take their shoes off when in the house but I think I'm gonna remove it because yeah not so sure I'm a fan of it but let's go ahead and get our behind over to school y'all I made it to school and this is the selection of Sims girl but what you got on though Hazel Andrews I don't even know who you are like you're so pretty but girl whatever they do with your CC is just not it uh this is Tyasia Murdoch uh that is our homegirl's friend and of course they have our cousin here and Rodrigo who is this Blake y'all okay so I think we're about to go ahead and bring up with Blake in the beginning of school like how is that gonna feel the first thing of school your girl is finna break up with you I believe you have to do mean and do break up because I mean ain't no point in prolonging it hold it one and y'all Blake looks different I don't know what happened when I was fixing my game I think I deleted some CC um that did not need to be deleted um look at them they both mad um but anyways yeah it caused certain hairs and stuff to be gone like um baby Kentaro's hair was gone as well alright y'all so she is breaking up with him girl don't look so disappointed you could do better than him okay do y'all go okay so their friendship went down and his romance went down so he he he's big hurt it's okay you're big hurt it's right uh his name is Brennan um who is this boy Alyssa Rodrigo alright so we broke up with him so here's hoping she gets a sentiment um or something to do something different I mean um so yeah now in this part y'all something else that I really I really wanted to do is distinguish who her friends are so I be having her like make friends with so many people yeah this isn't gonna show us anything um but it's like girl all these can be your best best friend I really wanna see like who she has the best relationships with like Aubrey Jordan um let's see Myla we we just deal with Myla Myla's not really our best friend I think Riley's our cousin in Summer um her and Serena are cool but I don't think they're like best friends Maya is her aunt so I would say her best friends are Summer okay hold up yeah it's not even telling us what to do in this class so we'll just go ahead and do some things um because we are going to need to get this stuff up so that we can get into college anyway we definitely wanna make sure we're asking our questions in class so we can go ahead and get that skill gained y'all um so yeah I would say Summer is a cool friend but I feel like she is closer to Jordan and Aubrey so Aubrey I guess Aubrey is like her best of best friends and then it would be Jordan and then Summer so okay y'all we got our little girl getting going like you know Cashmere is our cousin so we always gonna be mad cool with her y'all he's kinda cute like I think we finna talk to Rodrigo because Rodrigo is no you know what who is talking to Rodrigo I think Summer is talking to Rodrigo no I don't know because I know who somebody I know somebody was doing y'all mean with Rodrigo at summer camp and I can't remember who it was so I'm going to have to take a look back and then we got this guy named Kyle Schaefer he is super cute too um I don't think he's here y'all look at this little geeky boy I created like y'all he's just so cute but he's just such a freaking geek like dude lose the glasses oh yeah I feel like he is so cute like I feel like he would be that person I'm looking at him sitting next to Kate worry I feel like he would be that person and that turns out to be like the perfect match what did I say about Kayori what did I say is that Kayori um it's just saying that she broke up with him y'all she feeling confident like she happy she like mm-hmm listening ain't nobody carrying around those dead weight that's what we don't do and she left his behind alright girl don't be answering your phone in class school warning oh girl we don't even need that we in school okay well look at her with her little um her little belly shirt on well not even a belly shirt girl you got on a whole bra in school like you need to go to the principal's office for code of conduct um but her sister is cute so she had grew up y'all and they had her so fugly I had to actually go in and fix her up um because at summer camp she was a child but I guess she grew up which is a whatever speaking of growing up let's make sure our aging is turned off because that's a problem that we do not want age auto age unplay Sims hell no auto age play Sims hell no um lifespan is on normal already apply yeah please don't please don't kill my Sims I I don't want that alright y'all so I just saved this and yeah let's go ahead and get back into this game if it ever wants to save so yeah I'm so glad that now we know who her actual friends are um come on and focus alright girl we could stay here until like ten um but I kinda need you to have like an early lunch because you hungry um are we about to raise our hand and ask to use the restroom because we really got to go so go ahead and um leave your teacher be y'all I'm about to give them unlimited money because these people do not do what they supposed to be doing alright let me see pull us that find a caterer which is this person we're gonna control them hopefully this does not break my game because y'all know sometimes the Sims don't like when I be controlling other Sims they don't go for it so here's hoping this works so we are going to do I guess we can do custom food and do uh make custom gourmet food now now cook custom meal let's cook a custom meal is this gonna make like one dish we don't wanna make like one thing we need to do serve um so let's do that again and is there an option for serve um probably not um y'all I have so much shit in my game it don't make any sense a cook by culture cook together no um no no so it must be in custom food okay um we just gonna do cook custom meal and hopefully this is it I believe it's supposed to give me an option for how much to cook and they don't even know how to cook that much so we not even about to do that um so go just serve brunch or whatever and we are going to have some orange chicken today I think that's a good uh meal to have so you stop talking to uh him and go and cook us something to eat please and thank you so she is going to the bathroom y'all um and what else can we do because I don't even think we feel like going back to class at this point but I guess I'm looking at Blake sitting all alone y'all I'm poor Blake um I guess he should have thought twice before speaking to our mother however he wanted to speak to her um let's see we're gonna go back to attend this class while we wait for lunch um Carlos should visit the dentist and that's his problem we don't care I would just say okay attend class girl why you gonna always in here to wash your hands trying it and why you come always out here to prepare this meat like you're trying it too like y'all Sims really do the most ridiculous thing you have an entire area around the refrigerator that you have to get the food out of surrounded by cabinets or countertops and you choose to go all the way out there you know what whatever alright so where are you at Kayori we just patiently waiting for this man to finish cooking lunch at this point um let's ask questions about that ask questions about some programming y'all so I was also trying to figure out what I potentially want her major to be when she does get to college um and I'm kinda sorta leaning towards law like I feel like law would be like so good for her like doesn't she just look like a lawyer in the making I'm sorry she just looks like a lawyer in the making to me okay alright so lunch is done so let's go ahead and um oh my goodness don't tell me my mod in here call to money here we go um and it's gonna be Cashmere and Tyasia we're gonna do the children not Cameron I think that's the dad um Hazel I don't know none of y'all Travis is a child I don't know why he's here I didn't see him here anyway we won't starve you Blake so come on um Brennan come on um and I think that's everybody so um let's go eat y'all let's see get back in here to Ms Kay y'all she is just so freaking cute and then look at this chick still standing in the classroom like Tyasia I'm gonna need you to sit your behinds on you cute in the wall alright are we gonna go okay there we go there we go there we go oh she just so freaking cute and I don't know why I'm in the walls but we're in the walls let's get out alright where you at um y'all please don't tell me she's sitting somewhere stupid um sit right here oh y'all now all of a sudden she's starting to feel sad and breakup blues from breaking up a relationship coming to an end this sad event in any Sims life hey I heard you became friends with Blake girl we just left his ass share sadness so she has all these sad emotions now from breaking up with this dude like girl you don't wanna wanted to like I only did would ask Maya to okay y'all so this is the little incest thing okay so we are getting hit with the incest thing so apparently she broke up with her boyfriend who is not her relative to then want to date her aunt her biological aunt her this is her father's baby sister listen we don't do that over here okay we are not with the incest we don't be with the cousins and the mothers and aunties and uncles that's not what we do so I want to X this and I cannot which sucks um oh my goodness install it with a kiss wow wow so they really are not playing this is ridiculous like this is really hmm I was hoping that that was fixed by now like I really held out y'all um I look at her about to grab a drink now if you're done eating up and I guess this is the other glitch with thumbs still being in the yellow even when they are not so go ahead and buy yourself a snack um we can get some potato chips can we get like a drink no I think this thing has drinks in it um buy slushy because we definitely have slushies at my school so she can get a bag of chips and a slushing cuz I used to love getting me a slushy and some chips at school every day okay so I guess they're broken we're broken is that what it is uh oh okay you know what maybe it's in her inventory okay holds wine um no it's not in her inventory so the one thing she didn't get but she did buy the bar I guess um so that that is what it is so she has a chocolate bar fine um look at Blake walking around like dude I'm gonna need you to not keep walking like you think you're somebody like I get a whole nother man in your face okay there is this primal animal like urge in all of us some of us fight it but I think we should just give ourselves up to it and act on it I think I feel it too he mean sex rape you're a moron leave me alone what are you talking about y'all so this is a dilemma because if I'm not mistaken him and Summer yeah I mean at summer camp but I might be wrong it might have been him and the chick that we got into a fight with that yeah I mean in summer camp and I feel like the way Kayori is feeling right now y'all like she in her bag she is experiencing life she is doing whatever and you know she's not really into caring too much about like consequences or like other things like you know maybe she's getting that age where she's trying to figure out how to be a good friend and you know all those little things that come along with that maybe she just don't know yet like hey that's your girl's guy you don't do stuff like that and you know maybe this is about to be a hard lesson uh for Ms Maum um but y'all we're gonna go ahead and fast forward because I don't have anybody else to look at on here um so so yeah alright y'all so I miss Kayori is done doing what she had to do uh her teeth are yellow oh girl you need to go home and brush your teeth like bad mm-hmm that's not cute um but y'all at this point I feel like our girl will have a reputation like y'all she missed all the rest of her classes because she was in here giving this man some sloppy topi and jerking him okay and let's go ahead and send her home for the day but y'all seriously Kayori is like a school S L U know what um because she y'all she's really I guess she's just into her sexual side right now um from unsatisfying sex y'all she like so he got me giving him the topi and jerking him off but I have no pleasure whatsoever she's not happy about that well at least she know so I guess she's like so she's walking home now y'all so I feel like she would be like alright at this point and now I know when I'm sleeping with these guys they have to get me off before I get them off so we ain't doing that no more topi topi unless they giving us what we need to be getting okay but y'all Ms Kate worry is something else um I wish the game had like where you could have reputation like I know we have reputations but not reputations like this I want her to have like a school reputation because if you're doing stuff like that you're gonna get the reputation okay I was always the good girl so I never had that issue but I know that if that's what you were doing in school you got that reputation and yeah that's how everybody knew who you were and you know either you owned it or you you held your own and kept lying about it so Ms Kate worry is is that girl okay so let's go ahead and clean up real quick um I want you to get upstairs and take a shower um I think I'm gonna have her and her close friends go oops not pee she doesn't need to pee but she do need to take a shower and brush her freaking teeth um how is my favorite granddaughter I was worried that you had an eight I just wanted to make sure all things gramps we appreciate that um brush your teeth girl and we're gonna go ahead and hang out with the ladies y'all so we're gonna hang out with Summer um who else Summer and Jordan I think Jordan is just so freaking cute um Summer Jordan and Aubrey um and so we can catch up and let the girls know what the girls need to be knowing because maybe they all don't go to the same school you know and maybe they go to different schools in different districts or different neighborhoods you never know um now I do want to get the curfew board but I guess I'll wait until we get back home wait do we have the curfew board I think we do but the parents are not here to set curfew so I'm gonna have to wait okay maybe we can um a curfew is at let's see because she's in her last year high school I feel like it should be eleven o'clock but maybe on a school night it shouldn't but we'll keep it at eleven um or should we change it to nine where's that teacher guy at that I was controlling alright it's cool I'll stop controlling him tomorrow when we get back to school that is fine um do I want I feel like I don't I feel like I want nine set curfew at nine o'clock because this is school night you know um weekends eleven o'clock is fine but on a school night mm-hmm that's not what we doing um no we're not doing homework because we're gonna meet up with our girls and get our homework done so let's go ahead and travel y'all and I will see y'all when we get to our destination alright y'all so for whatever reason I do not know why my game whenever I go to travel it's not giving me the Sims to travel it's there like all grayed out I'm pretty sure it's something to do with the update and the bull crap so we'll just go ahead and invite them here y'all my girl is too freaking cute I don't know why she changed her outfit and got all cute to come down here I guess she was like listen it might be people downtown okay um alright girl come on hurry up let's hurry up and get her to invite everybody um but you guys we have already been down here this is our Nelson line and our loft restaurant which I cannot wait to freaking visit one day um okay here's Aubrey that's what I'm talking about um let's go ahead and greet Aubrey um as for hand massage now let's do friendly um let's see what can we do ask her about her day like girl how was your day today like how was things at your school because my school was pretty dry but I have some juicy tea to spill to y'all um as soon as everybody is here we're just waiting on everybody else Summer Murdoch will be right over and Aubrey is here and Jordan will be right over alright so we're just waiting for everybody so I'm just fast forward through this um until they all show up alright so I don't see anybody else showing okay I think they're in there okay so let's go in here um we're gonna sit down together because I do want them to do some homework shoot this is set as a restaurant um so they have to request the actual table um you know what that should be fine that should be fine they shouldn't have any problem requesting that table and sitting there um it should be spawning a barista uh for us um so hopefully that happens but we're not gonna order any food we may order a drink or two but yeah so let's go ahead and get that table where is Summer let's see if we can find her focus the camera um okay there is Summer oh why is our group not showing y'all and you know what it's going to take them all out the group oh my goodness y'all I'm really starting to hate this game like it's just way too much like it's becoming way too much to actually play um from a group you cannot change oh my goodness alright y'all so we might have to give up our table if everybody can't sit at it we're gonna have to give it up um I don't see why is that what happened okay sit together um let's see if everybody comes with us okay yes y'all listen and Jordan be fucking slaying okay and so do Aubrey so see I see why they're all best friends because like look how they be looking like Summer's cute too but I don't feel like Summer really throws that shit on like the other three like they're really like fashionistas but I wanna control her real quick because I wanna see if she is indeed the one that was with um Rodrigo um because I don't know I don't really remember let me see I'm Brian Mara okay and maybe and not I believe it might have been Maya that was busting Dion with him or maybe it was Sasha no I don't think it was Sasha um but maybe it was him okay we'll stop alright good so you're not a bad friend after all yay I love that for you because I really kinda didn't want you to be her best friend like I kinda do because I want you to learn those life lessons but at the same time y'all y'all they are too cute let me take a picture real quick I wish this girl did not have these glasses all messing up in her eyes um but they are just all so freaking beautiful like beautiful melanated queens um alright so let's go ahead and start doing our homework can we sit here and do our homework together where's her freaking homework book y'all oh oh my gosh where's the homework book where's the homework y'all I've had it I've had it I'm about to start singing again because I've had it um it's under purchase gift um we can give some homework right books um let's see can we purchase homework here and no we cannot um there are some computers over this way so let's go ahead and try to purchase her a freaking homework book like how do you go out with your friends to do homework and you forget your book I don't think you ever had plans on coming out here to do homework with them I think you had plans on coming out here and socializing and doing whatever you want is it in my household I don't think so it's like llama somebody okay nope Amazon okay purchase let's see wedding cakes and no air buds diet purchase books okay here's hoping and this comes directly to our inventory oh I hope we're not frozen okay there we go um and do homework and do the um high school book yay y'all and it's in our inventory that's what we are here for alright so let's go ahead and get her doing this homework so let's do let's see what will we need for a law um I think this is what she is about to do at home so we'll do this um do some homework in this class so they're all gonna do their homework together um hopefully they all bring their books out and sit here yes ladies yes with the study yes ladies yes with the study session Summer is like she like what do I look like is she like what do I look like hold on let me get a picture of these ladies with their homework yes um not him all in the background photo bombing our picture but this is like the best shot where you can see all of them y'all they is just too freaking cute like let's get those angles okay so we're just gonna go ahead and have her complete I don't care um let's order some drinks for everybody as well y'all look at them doing their freaking homework like y'all I'm so freaking here for this not him all just staring at them in the background like Fred can you go somewhere like drop dead Fred shit um but he's trying it y'all y'all cannot tell me that they don't look absolutely freaking gorgeous where is Summer at like ma'am why you not over here doing your homework with everybody else like I don't get it and see here I am thinking um Kay worry was trying it but um you're trying it too um let's see control her where you at girl and what are you doing now come sit here do you not have your homework book she doesn't have her homework with her that's why she's not doing her homework well you could at least sit here and talk to them while they're doing theirs um but I also think because we have the best weight I was about to say how their relationship go down I thought we had the best relationship with Jordan uh we got the best relationship with Aubrey so I think we're gonna become best friends with Aubrey in this part um if we can find it of course y'all not can never find anything inside of these menus uh let's see A is usually up here we go become best friends forever yes I love that for her oh my goodness no I don't think they became best friends okay this popped up oh so she can have a banana milkshake yes I love that for her let's see where's Kayori at I don't even freaking know you know what whatever they just gonna be getting stuff because it's a not loading who is who and so they better take it or leave it and if they leave it that's when I'm a cranberry lemonade that sounds so good um watermelon cucumber singria no we're not gonna get any alcohol and be going home all jacked up um leche soda don't want her to have a leche soda yeah she got the leche soda I'm afraid and what did I get Kayori the banana milkshake okay fine um alright ladies are is y'all homework done alright compose analytical argument together that's fine um and then we can oh look y'all so why I couldn't find this when I was going witcher gallons of write an English paper together that is too cute would not hurt not liking Summer wait y'all y'all have to all like each other and get along because this is the click yeah I need them to all go to the same school like that's what I need alright and let's see so we're just gonna let them wait they should be sitting back down to do homework again um what are you doing she's ordering for the table um okay oh we had to sit in a seat to do it okay fine so hopefully she ordered uh everybody's drinks and yeah I think they need to like just sit down and talk and whatever so let's go ahead and talk to her a little bit more uh friendly we are going to ask about her day y'all she is so freaking pretty like I feel like this girl could be a whole sim model like y'all if y'all need a sim model hit me up cause my girl got you my girl got you um we're not gonna ask if she want kids we're gonna brighten up her day let's throw this back down Summer we need to start talking to Summer a little bit more cause hers is really young let's see what can we do like I hate when this be all filled with nonsense let's do a deep conversation girl not you trying to be mean uh-uh we not pointing out nobody flaws don't do that mm-mm we don't do that little insecure girl stuff no we don't do that and we do not do that girl so I'm gonna need you to get it together um discuss some fitness techniques what is up with Summer in these dirty looks that she been giving let me find out she's not really a real friend like let me find out okay her face is changing let's put our book back in our inventory and whoever's book is that they need to get their book off the table and so that who we can uh have our drinks when he comes back I'm about to destroy it let me see can we destroy her book okay there we go and we'll get her new one for next time here's hoping um and that's somebody else's homework um can we sit back at our table sit and chat here and hopefully our drinks will be coming over soon let me see did it load the barista or no because I don't have the right machines in here yeah probably because I don't have the right machines in and why will y'all not go to y'all table like what is up okay but we're talking so they're chilling um I'm waiting for their drinks I guess let's see oh so we still ain't order you know what F it wait it is what it is same thing happened when we went to the McDonald's the other day um it would not let us order like it was just saying still waiting to order like the guy had came and everything but it's ten o'clock y'all and we need to get home for school so I will see y'all in the morning time because I don't think we're gonna do anything else tonight it is five o'clock in the morning and we're gonna go ahead and get Miss Kayori up um and y'all today I am not going to be following her to school but we do have some stuff planned for after school today um can you please go to the bathroom like I asked you to oops she's in a naked girl why won't she go to the bathroom uh really really okay and no don't tell me our girl got lice first of all how do you get lice from sucking you know what alright let's go pee here in this bathroom really quickly yo nobody did what I asked him to do cause I know I told Kayoko to cook um let me see open this refrigerator because I know I told her to cook I told her to cook some a breakfast scramble and no she did not why my sins are acting mad hard headed right now make omelets then and one of your kids is gonna come eat this because you should not have done that alright let's see I think she's in the bathroom now we're heading to it our girl got crab lice oh my goodness Kay you got to be way more careful yeah and I'm guessing I'm having that glitch because it has her bladder in it yellow but I guess it's all the way for I don't freaking know um yeah go eat that grilled cheese sandwich that your mother made um let's see this boy he needs to get up and pee um I think we're just going to magically fix this uh toilet in here because we don't have time to wait for the dad to come fix it so let's pee um let's take a shower dad you can come get this baby out um pick him up Kayoko hopefully you're actually cooking this time and she is perfect alright Miss ma'am what are you up to okay so her hunger is going up perfect um let's see what else does she have here just the crab like so we're gonna have to go upstairs on her computer and order her some crab lice shampoo um who told them to fold laundry and put it here uh put the laundry away I guess her mom like listen girl I'm not gonna keep on doing your laundry for you um you go at least put it away for yourself so let's go ahead and do um we actually need to go to wicked whims here we go um and purchase wicked items and we need the lice shampoo hopefully our parents don't find out that we are buying this but yeah we're finna go ahead and buy that um put your laundry away um the items will be delivered to our mailbox perfect hopefully they hurry up and come dude I asked you to come pick this baby up why not any other time y'all he runs to come get this dead gone baby any other time he runs to come get this baby when he does not need to come and get the baby the baby could be perfectly fine it could be the middle of the night and the baby needs to go to sleep and he'll come and get it no no ma'am but now when you tell him to do it oh he don't wanna do it now where you at boy okay he's at least gone upstairs now at this point um Kayoko did you eat something ma'am because I don't want you to die because I don't know what's going on with the nonsense in this game more choices grab yourself a serving and eat um because even though it's green it looks a mighty low so I do not know we don't wanna take any chances um Kate worry is all set she's gonna be going to school and when she do y'all we're just gonna be fast forwarding through this um voting nobody cares about voting um okay alright also she is heading to school let's see this should give us an option to select what she does at school make friends leave copy be disruptive attend a club meeting actively participate let's see let's do some university prep why not um and we're just gonna go ahead and fast forward y'all and I will see y'all when she comes in from school alright y'all so it is a three o'clock and our girl is back from school um let's see she do need to go to the bathroom and whatnot so let's go ahead and do that y'all and it is a Friday so we are finna chill um let's go ahead and see so her friend is throwing a party tonight because their parents will not be here so Jordan's parents will not be home so Jordan is throwing a party tonight so let's go ahead and get our party set up real quick um let's see who all we can invite let's see we're gonna do a teen party um hopefully it invites everybody that we wanna invite I don't know why that says alright and then since that are re-invited are gonna be Jordan of course is her house um Travis is her brother um Liam is I believe their father so we definitely don't wanna invite him um Cashmere could be there a Tasia uh Leia I believe Leia is still adult a younger doll I don't know I guess Sha- um Milo be there Trey I don't know who all these people are I guess she could be there he could be there um Kyle let's bring Kyle um let's see who else can we bring what okay Aubrey definitely has to come that's a girl um and where is a Miss um Summer where's Summer at did I pass her um let's see now there's Shawna but no Summer let me find out my game age Shawna up I meant Summer I'm burning who is burning Wallace I don't know but let's invite him just in case so everybody that shows up here should be a teenager actually um so that means um so she did wanna talk to Logic Mateo so let's invite him and let's definitely invite Blake um who else can we invite because we need like a bunch of people here okay and that's always gonna allow us to bring one there um for household let's just add somewhere people come let's see he's already coming London Carson she can definitely be there that's um Jordan's sister I believe she's older so she can be there Liam I think Aaron is today I think Aaron and Selena and then Liam is her brother so we'll invite Liam I don't know any of these who are teenagers or not Serena I know Serena is a teenager um or at least she was if it aged her up I'm not sure um let's see let's go to friends make sure everybody in our friends list is added um not Lorenzo we're definitely not adding our uncle even though he's mad cool he wouldn't even be on no ish if we did add him but I think that is all I'll ask Sasha because I'm not sure um if she's an adult Katrina okay no so Katrina is for a new let's play I'm the ones we're not gonna add them um I don't know who else is teenagers so we're just gonna go ahead and get it started um and this is going to take place at Jordan's house which is a right here and this party is starting at seven o'clock so we need to go ahead and get our girl ready y'all I'm so mad that she will be going to this party with this crab lice because our medication is not gonna be here in time I wish her dad put some dragon clothes on they decided to y'all mean when all the kids went off to school like literally just as I was out I can't even talk just as I was pausing it and they decided to y'all mean so let's go ahead and and get Miss ma'am a new outfit